Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting of March 16th here at Memorial Town Hall. Got a few important topics to cover this evening. Before we get into the meat of the agenda, is there any sort of announcements that anybody wanted to make this evening? Do you have anything? No? Okay. We don't have any minutes as far as improvements, excuse me, approvals go as far as that.
Oh, we do have a set of minutes.
We do?
It's February 13.
Oh. Ah, they stuck to my.
I will make a motion that we approve the February 13th, 2020 minutes as submitted.
Okay. So there's been a motion made and seconded for the February 13th minutes. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thanks. Sorry about that. All right. The topic one, we have our list of appointments.
The community thing or the reading the yellow thing?
I was just gonna keep.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Thanks. I can.
I don't know.
Should.
Is he here for community?
No. Is there anybody here for community topic, conversation, public forum? I know I'm all.
Okay.
No?
Sorry.
No, 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 I understood now. I thought it was the whole thing. Sorry. I'm out of sync. Because they canceled St. Patrick's Day tomorrow.
We'll get there, I know.
All right.
You can still celebrate.
Yeah.
All by yourself.
More coffee. All right. In the meat of the meeting, Lydia is here, has presented us with a list of appointments, annual appointments, and we go through this process every year because they run from April through the following May. So, we have a list in front of us and some motions to make those approvals. We have a couple of different appointments. And so, we also were highlighted, did you want to speak to the list?
I just want to make sure you got the right one. Annual appointments is what we're doing. There are several positions that we reappoint every year, and it's the same people that are in the position every year. So, I want to look at, and I apologize, I didn't have time to do further research, so I'm asking you to make a motion to take these positions and make them a three-year appointment instead of a one-year appointment, so we don't have, because every time you're reappointed, you've got to come back in, get sworn in, the whole thing. And I put the caveat in there about unless it's prohibited by statute. There are some positions that by statute have to be a certain.
Have to be. Right. Yearly appointment.
Right. So, I still have to do that research, so this will give me the authority to make them or not, depending on what I find out.
Okay. And of course, if anybody is appointed, if the appointment went from one years to three years and something came up or they wanted to change, they could always.
They just send the letter of resignation or retirement.
Right. They're not forced to stay on.
No, they're not forced to stay on.
Okay. All right. So, we have the list, there's a couple of different processes to go. Lydia just explained the first one, so.
I'll just ask a question.
Yeah, sure.
I'm sorry, Ed, did you have a question?
No, I just, we'll move to motion one.
Oh, I just had a question, because, you know, some of them, I get this, the Veterans Commemorative Committee and that sort of thing, but the inspection department, is three years a good idea with them?
Kyle, he was fine with it.
Okay. They don't have to maintain certifications or anything, so you don't?
He's the head of it. Well, if they didn't maintain their certifications, they wouldn't qualify. And like I said, I didn't get a chance to do the research, so it may be that one of those isn't, you know, I'll find out, you can't move it to three years. So that's why it says unless prohibited by statute.
Right. This is sort of a.
But Kyle thought it was a great idea.
So, the understanding, as I understand it, Lydia, with the first motion would be to give you the authority, give us the authority to move these from one to three years, but in the meantime, you're going to verify the statute and make sure that that really can't be, if that's not the case for any of these eight, eight or nine inspector services or whatever the appointments are, then they're going to remain as one year.
Then they'll remain one year.
Got it. Okay. Is that?
I guess. I don't know why we wouldn't just wait and get the actual.
Because the terms run from April 1st to March 31st. I've got to get the appointments made so that I can start swearing people in and, you know, have them take their oaths for their next terms, which, again, is going to be a whole nother issue, because I'm going to have to think about that one.
You have to stand really far away.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I'll second the motion.
Well, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion, I move that the terms for the following offices be increased from one year to three years unless prohibited by statute, and further authorize the town clerk to make the appropriate adjustments to the annual appointments. Tree Warden, Veterans Service Officer, Veterans Commemorative Committee, Right to Know Officer, Inspector of Buildings Alternate, Inspector of Buildings Assistant, Inspector Electrical Alternate, Inspector Gas and Plumbing, Inspector Plumbing Assistant.
Okay, you've heard the motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
No, will you just let us know if there's any that, okay.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you. So that was to basically change, that motion was to change the request from one to three years. Now there's another motion to actually make the annual appointments.
Correct, and just before you do that, one thing. Steven was the Right to Know Officer before, so I have you in as the Right to Know Officer, I think. Did I mention that?
Yes.
Steve, okay, so you're.
Okay, we're good.
I move to make all annual appointments not highlighted on the list submitted to the board by the town clerk with the appropriate adjustments to terms as just voted.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thanks, Lydia. And then we have, is this coming under you as well?
Yes.
Okay. So we have another request for an appointment to the Board of Registriars?
Exactly.
Two? Yep. If somebody was.
We have, I move to appoint Joanne Petson and Lori Motica to the Board of Registriars.
I'll second.
So the motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, ladies. You're good?
Thank you.
Thanks, Lydia. So the annual appointments are completed.
Lydia, excuse me, before you leave, could you just notarize his, excuse me, there is a letter in the signature folder that requires a signature, and it says, signature must be notarized.
Okay.
A little sticky on it.
Yes. There's a couple.
No, not that, no, it's just a letter, there's a yellow.
Got it, there it is. All right. Sorry. Must be notarized.
Sign at the bottom.
Yep.
That's for CM.gov.
Are all those statements true when you're signing that voluntarily on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Hall?
Absolutely, yes ma'am.
This authorizes the town administrator and the assistant treasurer-collector to access Hatfield data on the CM.gov site. It's an entity registration that the town has, it exists already. We need to update it.
You don't have a notary clause on here, so I'll have to go type one out.
Oh, okay.
But that's fine, I took your acknowledgement.
Perfect. Thanks, Lydia. Thank you, Marlene.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. We have Brenna here from the Hatfield Housing Authority. As people may be aware, if you've watched any of our past meetings, we've had some conversation regarding redesign and enlarging of the parking area over at Kapalunk, and it was approved by the Board of Selectmen. It was presented by the Housing Authority and their engineer, the local state representative was on board with it as well, and then when the state got the final plan, they wanted us to amend it a bit. I mean, nothing huge, but they've changed some of the dimensions, right? So, as far as the parking lot goes, so.
Just to put a walkway to make it safe for people to.
Cut through.
Cut through from sort of the new parking through the old parking.
Right.
It's an added safety feature.
Yeah, and that was their biggest concern, was they deemed that it was unsafe, that the walkway just stopped abruptly, and I think that the board wanted that walkway to extend initially, so it kind of worked out.
It did work out.
You know?
Right.
But in order to do so, they had to move the spots that are directly in front of the community room, they didn't decrease them at all, they just realigned them. And by doing that, where you drive up is shortened by two feet, but not where the parking is beforehand, so there's still the 90-degree turns, that hasn't changed at all, it's just where, that one area where you drive up, they had to dig two feet from each side, kind of realigned to make the four-foot walkway, and those are all the changes.
Right, because they still wanted the same number of cars to fit, so your space had to come somewhere.
Yeah, and, yeah, and he did so without making the parking spots any smaller, which I appreciated, because I think that that would turn it into a whole new conversation had we had to make them smaller, but because they stayed the same, they just kind of shifted.
Right.
So, one of the things that was great about this was we were widening the area, the access for emergency vehicles, like the ambulance and the fire trucks and stuff, and Chief Flaherty's here. So even though it's not as wide as on the original plan, 22 feet, will be okay for you guys to navigate through there?
Yes. The minimum is going to be 20 feet, that's not negotiable, anything above and beyond. The recommended is the 24 feet.
Right.
That I believe was originally spec.
Yep, thank you.
But you're, so you're comfortable with that?
Yeah, thank you. And the other, the other thing I guess I'd want to just put on top of that is, the state wasn't really asking us for our opinion. They basically said, this is what we see as the plan for this to move forward, and I would say if the chief's okay with it, and Brenna and the Housing Authority are okay with it, and the state's okay with it, and that way, you guys qualify for the grant, then I'm okay with it. I think we should probably take a vote, just to, you know, make it official that the, probably what, the updated plan has been approved.
I'll make a motion, we approve the state's mandatory requirements that they have on this.
I like it. Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
No, thank you, Brenna.
All right, Brenna, thanks for coming in.
Do you want this back?
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Shall we? All right, so John's turned the camera a couple of times to hear from a few of our members of the audience, but, so you may have caught a glimpse. So, tonight we want to discuss the pandemic, quite honestly, the coronavirus, COVID-19, whatever we want to call it. And we've got Fire Chief, Lees Chief, DPW Director, Town Clerk, COA Manager, Board of Health, very important part of this process, Carrie Flaherty. So, we wanted to have a conversation, given that the federal government has declared a state of emergency, the governor has declared a state of emergency, the updates to that state of emergency just happen on a daily basis. So, we're trying to be, as the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen and the other department heads and the other departments, we're trying to be on top of it.
Proactive.
You know, I'd say proactive, but, you know, we're sort of sitting waiting for marching orders from the governor's office. Some of us were on a meeting, on a conference call with the Department of Health on Friday and the Lieutenant Governor, and even those, what I would say were stringent suggestions and recommendations, have already gone from 25 people to 10 people, I mean, it just keeps changing, with the idea being that we want our residents and our employees all to be healthy and to just sort of lay low and let this thing sort of pass us by as best we can without putting anybody at risk. Again, as best as we can. The schools are already closed, people are probably aware of that throughout the state, and we thought we'd have some of our, as I mentioned, some of our department heads and some of our, the officials that are directly involved with helping to, with the situation in the town, be here tonight and have a conversation and see if there were any next steps and recommendations. Sharon's here from the Collector's Treasurer's Office, I didn't see you, sorry. So, I don't know how anybody wants to proceed, or Carrie, did you want to say anything from the Department of Health?
We want to touch base with what we've already set in motion ourselves, and then we can discuss, I know there was discussion amongst of us, a bunch of us today about declaring the town as a state of emergency, it's been chatted upon, which really just comes to be.
Yeah, maybe you guys could come up.
If.
Whoever's going to speak might want to come forward.
Jerry, maybe.
So if we want to run over some things that we've already taken action on, and then we'll come back to discussing the state of emergency and so on and so forth, or for the town specifically, having the town declare it too.
I think that's a good idea. Yeah, because the townspeople are obviously familiar with what they're reading and seeing on television, reading the local newspapers, but that's to the bigger population, right? So we do want to be, after you go over that, we want to be specific to what we see for the Town Hall. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah.
So, as you said, this has been an ongoing, I mean, all of us are receiving the emails and the phone calls and the conference calls for well over the past week, every day it changes. I mean, Friday, we met, I met Friday morning with the superintendent and the principal of schools and did a conference call at 8:30 with Desti and DPH at that point, and I left at 9:15, and by the time I came back, we already had made changes, and it was only an hour difference, so, and then Friday afternoon, we made more changes. So, as of today, and we can kind of correct things as we go along here, the governor has declared multiple bans. At this point, schools are closed from, now, teachers have been allowed in today and tomorrow, but students have been out of the school buildings in Hatfield since last Thursday. They already had had Friday off, so it was declared on Friday that they would not come back until this was figured out timewise. As of last night, that got moved back, it was supposed to be two weeks, and they were supposed to reenter on March 31st, now they're not reentering until April 7th.
And that's, excuse me, and that's a state mandate.
And that's a state mandate per the governor last night. He did a press conference last night, which changed a lot of this. I know that, I had multiple conversations with the superintendent last night, because obviously trying to figure out how to get educational packets put together for the students, because obviously three weeks of missing school is a lot of time for all students of all ages. So, that has been figured out, the school has done their great part in figuring all that out to keep our students educated in the town, and parents have all been advised of that from all levels, so they're moving forward that part of it. I had been in discussion, just sticking with the schools for a second, with Lunch Program Director, Amy, and I apologize, I don't remember.
Hutchins.
Hutchins. She emailed me today, the state has allowed that for students that get reduced lunching or that fall into those guidelines, they're allowing schools to be able to put together the meals that normally students would get, so that obviously no child goes hungry, doesn't miss a meal, that kind of stuff. So, she reached out to me in those regards, and I said, I did, that we, the Board of Health, is going to approve that kind of stuff if there's students that qualify and there's a way for us to be able to make meals and get it to their families, that's what's going to happen. As for that, so, school is closed till, they don't reenter until April 7th unless something changes, that's the deadline. Municipal buildings will be closed to the public, as stated in the letter that was put forward by all of us from this weekend between the two boards, effective tomorrow, 3:17, and that will continue through also to 4:07 at this point. The letter originally had said to March 31st, but we're extending it along with the school closings at that point.
So, if I could just touch on that, as, I don't mean to.
No, interrupting at any point.
I don't want to mess up your flow.
No, no, go ahead.
But along those lines, I think it's very important for the townspeople to understand that Town Hall is closed to the public. So, the doors are locked, the signs are up, you can bang on windows and doors if you see somebody in here, it could be a worker, we're not opening the door. So, don't come to Main Street to expect to get into Town Hall. That's all.
Right.
Thank you.
So, with that said, we, and again, it's in the letter that's, did go on the Town website, did we get it on there today? I wasn't, I honestly hadn't myself.
Who posted?
It was on there yesterday, yep.
So, we've shared the letter, I know that Jerry had taken our letter that was made by the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health, and also added in some extras to help with our seniors and stuff that they're doing, so I saw that on her Facebook page for the Council on Aging, which was excellent, because it gets out, it's getting out there to the public, which is, that's the biggest thing that we can do right now. So with that said, the Town Hall, like Brian just said, is going to be closed to the public from 3:17 to 4:07. Employees that work in the Town Hall still can come to work, still can work in their offices, and anybody who needs to communicate with any individual office in the Town Hall needs to do that by email, phone, and in that case, they can make arrangements. As for the Collector's Office, I've been talking with the Assistant Treasurer Collector, people need to either pay online through the website link, or they need to mail in a check with their bill to the Town Hall. It's very important, don't just mail a check, you need to mail your receipt from whatever bill you're paying along with the check, so that they can process it correctly when they receive it. That's a big, big deal of the whole office for them to function correctly, because all we're doing is adding on more work if you just send a check for them to have to search it. So that leaves, people that are allowed to come into the Town Hall is Board of Selectmen members, Board of Health members, people who have offices already in this building, Police Department, Fire Department, DPW, Water Sewer employees. Other than that, all other elected boards or not elected boards, whatever the case may be, can communicate with their individuals via phone or email, they should not be here and present in the building. We're trying to keep this as, they keep saying, as much social distancing as possible.
Carrie?
Yes?
What about, like, boards that have meetings?
We're going to have to discuss that as the time comes on, we've talked about having conference call kind of meetings, or if meetings.
Yeah, we'll get to that.
Or we can discuss further, is that if meetings aren't emergency right now, they should be postponed to at least April, and not have meetings unless it's absolutely necessary right now to keep that social distancing. That's really what the governor is telling us, it's what even, like, the Trump administration, them, their press conferences are saying the same thing, the least amount of meetings and so on, the better. Go ahead.
Can I, are we, I mean, to me, we should, I feel like employees should have the option of working remotely. I mean, I understand that we're saying they can be here, but we're not requiring them to be here, right? If they have a job that they can do remotely.
Right, and I, which, that touched base in the thing, if somebody can work remotely and be able to do their everyday work.
Right.
Then yes. But, the other fact of it comes to be, and Marlene and I talked about this, is that business still needs to function and stuff still has to happen, so if you can't work remotely, everybody here has an office to be able to shut the door, the public's not going to be here, they can work in their office. If, if they're able to work remotely, then great, if not, then they hopefully can be here to do that, and really that comes down to department heads dealing with their employees at that point, I'm not, as the Board of Health, going to get much more involved in that part of it. Social gatherings, earlier, or yesterday was changed from 250 people down to 25 effective tomorrow, now it's been changed, or at least the Trump administration had just done about an hour ago, did a press conference, that he's wanting the number to be lowered to 10. There's been discussion about the superintendent search that they're in the middle of right now with the schools, I have to follow up with Heather Cahill in regards to that, because I don't know how many people are really involved in that whole search process, so we have to discuss that, because obviously that's something of importance to get taken care of sooner than later. Restaurants, all have been advised in the town, bars have all been closed, restaurants will be closed as of tonight. Restaurants are allowed to do takeout food, so there's no dining in or sitting in, as they call it, in a restaurant facility or bar location. So, my colleagues today, Jeff Zagradnik, took care of contacting all the local facilities for me, and then I went and did touch base with both Smithsonian and Subway, Subway was already closed, I don't think they're even open right now, that they can still continue to do takeout, but they can't have people sitting in and eating. I did see, just so the townspeople know, it looks like out of our two restaurants we have in town, Grill and Chill will be doing takeout from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, but Fish Tales has posted on their Facebook page that they won't be doing, at this time, they won't be doing any takeout or any food out of the restaurant.
I was just going to ask if we had information about.
Yep, so.
What about the Chowder House?
The Chowder House, Peter says, I talked to him, and it's really sad, this whole thing is so tragic to our economy from everywhere across the board, it doesn't make a difference what employment part of it it is, he's already seen a big hit, and this is just from last week, I mean, I went there today to say, well, hopefully, you know, people will still come and take the takeout, they just can't sit here to eat, and he said they've already seen a huge hit to them, and he's lost a lot of catering over the next eight weeks, which is huge, so.
And then we have a brand-new restaurant that's.
Right.
You know, the Waxwing is.
Waxwing posted, I haven't been in contact yet with their owner, because I know they don't open, they're open Wednesdays to Sundays.
Right.
I was going to reach out to him tomorrow, or to both of them tomorrow. My understanding is on their Facebook page or on their website, one or the other, they're putting together a takeout menu.
Correct.
To kind of take down what they have as a menu into something that they can do as takeout, so that will be an option to the townspeople, I just don't think they have that in effect yet. So hopefully, and again, same thing.
So, townspeople should probably call or look at the websites of these various restaurants to see what they're doing.
Right. And realize that they are doing it so that if, you know.
Yeah.
It's easy, if it's easy for people to be able to go and they want to just do a takeout, at least you still can do takeout and.
We can still support a local business.
And we can support our local businesses as best as we possibly can during this really tough economic time.
You can also buy gift cards, sorry.
No.
Yeah, that's another option, is buy gift cards that you can use.
Right, that you can use later.
I was just going to hop on Diana's comment, which is, I would recommend if the public's interested, that things are changing daily, so whether a restaurant is opened or closed today for takeout, that could change tomorrow.
Right.
So you really should, if you're interested, make the call or check their website or something, so you have their latest and greatest information. Sorry, Carrie.
No, you're fine. Some of this stuff is what people already know, but I think it's good that we're just rediscussing it, I know it's kind of dragging things out a little bit, but I apologize for that.
Don't apologize.
I just want to touch base COA-wise, and correct me if I'm wrong in any of these facts, but I know Jerry had made arrangements with Highland Valley that they have now packaged.
We can let Jerry speak to.
Go ahead.
It's okay. So, technically, as of today, the senior center is closed, all our programs and activities have been suspended. Congregate meals, so our people that are regular participants that have been coming to the meal site, we are now delivering their meals, my driver is doing that. Van transportation, we're still continuing the van transportation for medical appointments and grocery shopping, nothing to do with mall shopping. As far as shine appointments, those will be conducted over the telephone, Kathy Scott's been notified of the appointments that she had, so she will contact the individuals. Brown Bag will continue on April 7th, which is the first Tuesday, and if need be, all the bags will be delivered, we usually have home-delivered and we have pickups, so we'll take care of that. The office is open from 8:30 to 4:30, so if anybody needs to call in to make any medical appointments, or just to talk with any concerns that they have, they can get in touch with us. The statement, I have the letter here that went out onto our Facebook page, I gave it to Marlene this morning, she posted it on the website. We are putting out our newsletter, so I will be putting a copy of my letter along with the town's letter as an insert in the newsletter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, that's great. I mean, I think we're looking after them as best we can, under the circumstances.
Yeah, we're also going to do wellness checks over the phone.
Yeah, that's great.
Call everybody, so.
Okay. Okay. If you need, will you maybe need help from any departments with the brown bag delivery at that, when that comes, or is it not that much? You think the van drivers can do it?
Yeah, so me and I may have just one volunteer help because it doesn't take too long to do that. So we have had, I've seen on the only at Hatfield Facebook page, that there was a woman that has volunteered if anybody needed her to do grocery shopping or pick up prescriptions, that that's available. So we're trying our best. We had our St. Patrick's Day luncheon for tomorrow, so basically Highland Valley is going to be delivering them to me. I will be accepting them. They, anybody that signed up can come between 11:30 and 12:30 to pick up their lunch, and then the rest will be delivered.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you very much.
So I, I really think that's a very detailed layout of what we've been dealing with. Every day, something else changes. We've seen it go from, like I said, 250 people for social gatherings down to 10 now, or close to getting to 10. That people just need to help each other out as best as you possibly can. Keep yourself healthy, keep yourself safe, follow the guidelines that have been set out there about symptoms and so on. Our phone number, I mean, we've, on the letter, it has the town administrator's number and extension and the clerk's office and extension. Just realize that all of us in our own capacities are here if needed, if people have questions, or need help, or need guidance to get some help somewhere for whatever it may be. That's, as I said to Brian last night, it takes a village for all of this to work, and it's not one individual. It's all of us working together to get us all through this tough time, which it clearly is very drastic for everybody, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, thank you, Carrie, and I would agree. And I think it's not only a difficult time, it's an unknown time because every day it's changing. And along those lines, we will, we, the select board, Board of Health, and all, you know, fire, police, everybody, will do their best to continue to update our website and, and reach out to the public the best we can. But to Carrie's point, it's really, we just have to lay low. I mean, it's, it's tough, but the social distancing, the washing of the hands, and certainly, you know, the elderly is more susceptible from, from everything we're reading and seeing. So those are the folks that really need to be careful, and we need to be, we need to be careful when in their presence. So it's just, it's going to be a rough couple of weeks, but, you know, we'll get through it.
Yeah, and I mean, we, everybody will help each other out. This is the kind of town that does that all the time anyway. I guess one thing I would just, a couple of things I just wanted to add. One is, you know, I've seen things about kids being home from school and discouraging playdates and all of that sort of thing. And at our house, we're doing that. We're not letting Hadley go anywhere, see friends or anything, which is, she's not exactly happy with that. But, I mean, I think that, you know, this is, it's really important that we do that, and that's the point of closing the schools, is to keep everybody apart. And I think that's a really important piece of this. But I wondered if Mike or Bob wanted to add anything from your departments?
As far as emergency responses, we were actually set up pretty well prior to the pandemic coming about. We had suits and gloves and masks and all those things for us to be able to respond with. And then the new guidelines came out of, you know, how far we're supposed to be away from patients, and depending on what is going on with the patient, how we are supposed to dress and try to assess that patient. So we were already ahead of the game a little bit. We have some supplies. Right now, we could handle easily 15 to 18 individuals with the current supplies that we have. We do have more on order. I ordered some more gowns and some mask things last week. Chief DeKoscheck put in a request to the FurCog on Friday, looking for additional gowns and more, and 95 masks. So we should be in pretty good shape. Some of those things were actually due to come in this week. I believe FurCog was still a little bit delayed, but they were looking to start receiving their cache of supplies hopefully within the next two weeks, and then they would be distributed. So emergency response wise, I believe both Chief DeKoscheck and myself, we sent out memos to the Board of Selectmen and Town Administrator about how some changes are for how we are responding to calls. But we're, we're in pretty good shape as far as our emergency response. Still in town, we are essential personnel, so we are going to be there. The biggest part that we could run into on either department is a staffing issue that if for some reason we end up with any one of our employees contracts the virus, it could potentially devastate our response because we can lose employees very quickly. But currently, I feel that we have enough precautions in place and shouldn't be too big of an issue. And as of right now, and talking to the Board of Health, I know of no confirmed cases currently in Hatfield, which is a good start, that there's nothing currently here.
And I was going to touch, I don't mean to interrupt you if you, because I'm going to say chief, but I was going to touch base on that. We, we have a system that the Board of Health uses, it's called Maven. That's where the Department of Public Health puts people that might have come in contact with, or have been quarantined or confirmed, yes. And as of today, I talked to the gentleman on the phone actually, and Hatfield does, is definitely as of 2 o'clock this afternoon, did not have any possible cases, confirmed cases, or tested cases. Hopefully, we're going to be able to keep it that way. But we are informed if somebody does. So right now, they haven't changed really the rule of the HIPAA violation stuff, but we, emergency response wise, because I kind of wear both hats in this town, that information to a point can be shared to at least the fire and police personnel so that they're aware of the situation and location. So it's not that this has to be kept a huge secret, but it won't, it's not going to be publicized if somebody does come down, contract it, or is exposed to and is being quarantined unless that individual starts to tell people. It's not going to be told to everybody department wise, just so that-
Just people who professionally would need to know.
Correct. And, and obviously, I mean, again, it's the people who may have come in contact are going to self-quarantine, and you're going to follow through and do what you got to do with what the doctors and everybody and CDC and all these people are saying you have to do. So, but as of now, we definitely don't have any cases. That hasn't changed yet, thankfully.
Do-
Anything, Mike? Sorry.
No, everything here right on the mark and very well said. What we're in the stage now is planning for tomorrow. Today, we're, we're set. Who knows what tomorrow will bring, but we are looking, you know, towards that and, and planning for that as best we can. The, obviously, we're going to be here, no matter what. We're going to be here. We have to look at our own, like Bob said, staffing, and if we have to make any adjustments to that to make sure that somebody is here. You know, so all of that's being looked at. And it's just an ever-changing situation right now. In all honesty, I think everybody is, everyone's just kind of trying to keep up at this point in time. Nobody from the federal government on down is ahead of this thing, and it can't be. So everyone's just sort of doing that. I just wanted to touch base on, people might hear presumptive cases versus confirmed cases. There's a difference. So a presumptive case, and that's what we're going to be going by, is a presumptive case. Simply because a presumptive case means the state lab has confirmed that it's COVID-19, but it's not a confirmed case until those results go to the CDC and the CDC confirms. So you can have some significant lag time there, obviously, days. So a presumptive case is as good as a confirmed case for our purposes, but not for the, you know, for the purposes of the CDC. So just so that there's no confusion with that, presumptive versus confirmed.
Actually, I didn't know that, so that's good.
Thank you. And that's the right way to go. I mean, why, why wait? It's a presumptive case. Yeah.
I just want to say thank you. I hope the town can see how our department heads have all stepped up and gone above and beyond to stay on top of this. So I thank you all for doing that.
I agree, and I include Marlene in that because there's been, Marlene's been the communications guru through all of this, and we appreciate that, Marlene and all of you. It's nice, I mean, I'm comforted knowing that you're all on top of it, and I hope townspeople are as well.
And it's nice to have the information for the town direct, you know, right from the sources. I did have a question, and maybe it's a little early in the process, or maybe it's something that, that the police and fire do all the time anyways, but others might have the same question. So is there already, I know if there's an emergency, there's always a mutual aid aspect available in, as an emergency is happening. But given that this is a little different from a personnel perspective, has there been any conversation with other departments? Like, you know, Bob, you had mentioned, if somebody gets, if one of your guys or gals gets sick, then that could really create a staffing concern. So I guess I would just say our, our local department's already in contact with one another to sort of say, I got your back if something happens, and you have our back if something happens type thing.
So I have been in contact with Fire Chief for Northampton, who's one of our mutual aid for ambulance, and they also do come in for fire calls when we do need them. He has offered up any resources that we need. I believe my situation is slightly different than Chief DeKoscheck's because I'm in charge of a call volunteer force. So it's going to be a matter of whether or not those folks are available to come in anyway. And if they do get sick, they're not going to be coming regardless. So I'm going to run into the fact that I'm going to be calling mutual aid, but I have been in contact with them. So it's a little bit different where Chief DeKoscheck's going to have to be bringing in officers potentially on either overtime or whatnot to be able to do that. One thing, just while I have the floor for a second, logistically, as we've now, as the federal government and the state government has declared states of emergency, any funds or any requests, if you expend any money, it needs to come to one central focal point, which ultimately comes back to me as the emergency management director. So if you are buying, not your initial purchase, but if you need additional supplies for wipes, hand sanitizer, those things, go ahead and purchase them through your normal vendors. Hopefully, they're, they actually still have stock of them.
You're speaking to departments, not residents.
Correct. As departments, if you need things, make sure that those invoices come through the emergency management and the fire chief. We are working, and Deputy Chief Gunn is working on a spreadsheet to be able to keep tally of all these items. So when this is done, hopefully in, you know, maybe four to six weeks, if we're lucky, we'll be able to go through. We still need to pay our, our bills on time, but then the ability to reencumber funds because of the process that we're putting in place. But if you have anything, it needs to come to one central point so that way we can start tallying up those, those amounts to be able to submit it back.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
With that said, I tried ordering stuff through the Board of Health to try to help out departments last week, and everywhere that I can possibly think of ordering doesn't have anything. I made a checklist of what we were hoping we want, and I'm hoping as they come available, we're going, I'm going to get the emails like we normally would. And I'll, I'll do more research to hopefully find us other vendors or whatever. But the general vendors we use for the Clorox wipes, the hand sanitizer, I was trying to get us the hospital version hand sanitizer wipes because those are the best ones that we could have for around here. And it's out of stock, and it's not even giving a date of what, when it's expected to be available, where some other stuff was possibly going to be available this week. It's not even giving dates. So we're working on it and trying to get more. I mean, we have stock here. We've had stock for the schools and stuff like that. I mean, we purchased brand new hand sanitizer for everybody. So there's more than enough hand sanitizer for our machines that we have around, but to have just individual bottles or wipes is a different story. And I'm working on trying to get that for all of us, just so that department heads actually know that.
I think it's important for people to know there's a worldwide shortage on this stuff.
Yeah, it's not just Hatfield.
It's not, it's not America. It's not, it's the entire world. So there's a shortage on this stuff. Obviously, there's, you know, the supply chain, you know, there's some weaknesses in that and some vulnerabilities. So it makes it very hard to get those supplies. So the government can't even get these supplies. So it, it makes it hard. So for the public, if anybody, if anybody knows where there's a stash of supplies, I mean, we accept donations. So nothing wrong with that. But the personnel issue for us is slightly different, a little bit different, but just because of our different authorities and different things that we have. But yeah, there's, mutual aid is statewide for police for the most part. 90, 95 or more percent of the state is all mutually with each other police-wise. And then from there, you know, you have the state, and then ultimately would be the National Guard if it came down to that, if things got really bad. But yeah, there's always going to be some form of law enforcement, unfortunately, floating around somewhere, so.
But we're lucky we're so close to the state police barracks, too.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike. And I knew that. I guess I just wanted to sort of say it out loud and, and incase people at home, just to assure them that, you know, there's a plan in place, as there always is. But this is just a little different because, again, any, this emergency could affect multiple departments, not just-
For a very long time.
There's not a particular-
Storm or-
Right.
The thing for everybody to remember, I mean, at the end of the day, the spread of this virus is all we're trying to minimize. And that's what all these steps are about.
Yep, yep. Thank you for summing that up. Brenna, not to put you on the spot, but you're here as, you know, we talked about the parking lot, but is Kapewong, and I know a lot of the residents probably are involved with Jerry, but you guys all set, or you have any questions while we have these people here?
Well, we, we have our own guidelines that were given us by the state, and it's essentially the same as what the town is doing as far as, you know, our community room. I need to close that down, community bathrooms. I've asked all residents if they're not feeling well to let us know so that maintenance doesn't go in, just kind of common sense steps. But as far as, you know-
I mean, like, they have the shared laundry there. Is that, can you still keep that open?
You know, and that's one of those things, it's, it's up to the residents. If they feel comfortable using it, I can't tell them that they can't use it. Just asking people to use their best judgment. Unfortunately, there is that shortage in hand sanitizer and Clorox wipes. And so we're trying to keep everything as clean as possible, but you can only do so much, and they are such a vulnerable population. Kind of just advising them to keep to themselves for the next couple of weeks.
Do you get a sense that they're doing that?
I do. It's very, really quiet.
Good.
Carrie?
That's what I added, one more thing. Highland Valley Elder Services is still doing the home-delivered meals to homebound seniors. Right now, their staff is very overwhelmed. You do have staff members that are volunteers that are afraid to go out, you know, to deliver the meals. So they are looking for volunteers. So if anybody would like to help volunteer, because there's obviously not just Hatfield, all the communities, then they can call Highland Valley Elder Services to let them know that they would be interested in helping with the meal delivered.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you for that. Did anybody have any other questions?
I just wanted to, yeah. There, wasn't there, I thought I saw something about new protocols for conducting meetings under the circumstances. So I think we should-
The open meeting law.
Yeah. So can we talk about that a little bit? Is that all right with you, Brian?
Yeah.
Or is that coming a different-
No, no, no. I guess from this, the topic of having the chiefs here and Carrie, I didn't know if there was, is that why you wanted to bring that up now, Diane?
No, it doesn't have to come up now, but it's, is it kind of part of this declaration?
Well, sure. So can I ask my part first?
You're the boss.
No, no, I'm far, I'm far from the boss, but thanks. My question was actually going to be to, since Bob had brought it up as the emergency management director, and it kind of parlay's into the question. So we, we were going to have a conversation tonight about declaring a state of emergency in the town of Hatfield. I think Diana and I were, I overheard Diana speaking with somebody about, that has happened before, but it was specific to Hatfield. This, this declaration, in my opinion, is really just on top of the federal government and the state government. And I went through and read the law, or yeah, the law from like the 1950s, where it talks about different, different things. But in essence, what I'm looking for, Bob, to piggyback on what you said, is my understanding is it would allow, if, if we choose to declare a state of emergency in Hatfield, it would allow those costs associated with this coronavirus to be submitted to or reimbursed by the government.
Potentially.
Potentially. Other states of emergency that have happened are specific to the town, but this is, this is so big, we don't really have to implement any of what that authority might have granted us in, in a different circumstance, I guess is what I'm trying to say. We would have been able to close schools. We would have been able to limit restaurants. But that's, that's not what we're looking for here. If we move forward, what I'm looking for is to make sure our departments and the town as a whole can be reimbursed for anything that wouldn't normally have been an expense, reimbursed for anything that is because of this virus. So.
I think it's also just a good thing to do to put us in step with the federal government, the state government. And there's been some other local towns, I believe, that have also exercised their right to use this declaration. So I think it just, probably just makes sense to do that. And, and it's also just an official notice to townspeople, so.
It doesn't hurt. And as the chair, you know, echoed earlier that, you know, it's the unknown, and you don't know what could potentially happen.
While we're together and having a meeting in person, because who knows what that's going to look like moving forward, I think it's probably a wise thing to do.
Okay. So that was part of our topic. And along those lines, though, with the declaration would also be what the state has put out, which, Diana, that was your question, I think, or your comment, was regarding those public meetings of, of the future. And as far as being able to teleconference in or Skype, or, you know, whatever the means- are to do it remotely, given these particular circumstances, because they want as little human contact, and they want us to all practice social distancing, so.
I, I mean, I think that we, we should go over what the, how, how that can work, but I think it's important, you know, Carrie brought up that any meetings that aren't essential should just be postponed, but there will certainly be discussions that have to take place.
But in fact, if we could be meeting again, us that's sitting here, and we are already violating that ten-person social gathering.
That's right. If we didn't hold this meeting tonight, we couldn't have held it this way.
Right, absolutely, so we have to be cautious of that, too.
So we, we have to be able to, but other, there's some other boards and stuff that may have some decisions that need to be made in a timely manner.
That's right.
And so I, I guess I'd like to go over the different ways that it can happen.
Well, and, and for the board's information, when, when this became, this information, this executive order, part of the executive order released, I did forward this to the boards and committees. So just again, any board or committee that is going to have a meeting, you need to be sure it's ten people or fewer. So under, under Chapter 30A, Section 20, which refers to the open meeting law and, and the regulations, the Attorney General's Office has authorized remote participation by members of the public body, and it could be every member of that committee that is on a conference call. They encourage the boards and committees to make that call available to other citizens, anybody who's interested in participating. You know, I don't know of anybody that has a phone system set up to take in that many calls. So another practice is to make those meeting minutes available as soon as possible, file them with the town clerk's office, put them on the town's website. That is a way to inform the public. But, you know, they are waiving the open meeting law in, in this situation for remote participation.
Okay, but things still have to be posted and all of that.
Correct, you would still have to post your meeting, you still have to publish those meeting minutes.
And the minutes come out.
Correct.
Okay.
So if anybody does have any questions about it, they can contact my office, and again, I distributed that attachment to the email.
But I, I just.
Which is pretty clear.
My feeling, and I don't know how you guys feel, but I would strongly suggest that we minimize the number of meetings that take place at all.
I was gonna say that.
And then, but that, that, that's an option is, may become critical in the next week or two.
Yeah.
Well, and, and come, and realize that we've said, and the governor has said, that buildings are closed.
Right.
So in turn to that, if you're having a meeting, that means that you're supposed to be letting the public be able to be here, to, to be partaking in it. You know what I'm saying? So if you don't have to have a meeting, people, all boards across, across it, across the board, should not be holding meetings unless it's absolutely necessary, like this was an absolutely necessary meeting to have.
These may come up more, there may be things that change.
Right, they could, absolutely.
Particularly where a decision needs to be made, for whatever the, the reason of the meeting is, they do have the ability to meet, to make a decision.
Right, right, exactly. So I'm just saying, though, is that the general public, unless you really feel the need that you need to be here for, for it, realize that we have the televised versions, we have, we can get the minutes available as soon as possible for people to be able to read them and that kind of stuff, versus having to let them come in the building and be here also when the rest of us have to be.
Right, I think the important thing, just jumping on what, what you guys are already talking about, and we've talked about it for the last hour, but it's, it's about having as few meetings as possible with as few people as possible. We will take, we will take care of the town business. I mean, the, you, you folks in, in the audience at department head, and, and the four of us, Marlene and the selectmen, will continue to do what we need to do to keep the town rolling, but we, we just don't know. There, there's too much unknown, so everything, not everything, but some of the things we're saying tonight in a few days might change, given the directive from.
They've changed since this morning.
It changed since this morning. So I guess all I would say is we appreciate John being here so that the public can hear all of this and understand that we're still going to take care of the town's business, but it's, you know, everyone's going to have to be a little flexible and understand that we're, we're all doing the best we can to, to keep things rolling.
Right. Bob had a question.
Yeah, Bob.
Yeah, I have a question on just that. So, because I, I read the directive that we got today. So we have, the Community Preservation Committee has a public hearing scheduled for next Wednesday, which we're required to have prior to town meeting for review of the projects that will be considered at town meeting. And I just don't know if we have the capacity to do any of these things, to engage the public. And then we have, the planning board has a public hearing on the USA Waste Facility on Route Five and Ten on April First, which is well within the time period that we're talking about. So I, I just don't know how we handle situations like that.
But are they emergent?
Excuse me?
Are they considered emergency? Can they hold off until April when we have a better understanding of what's going on?
Well, the.
Yeah, the USA one probably has, you have to do it within a certain amount of time, right? Or I wonder if there's going to be some kind of.
It's already been extended once at the request of the applicant, actually, because they weren't ready for us.
Well, maybe under the circumstances, the applicant would consent to extending it because of the directives coming from the governor's office.
I think the other part that could happen, Lydia, you can hop in here if you feel it's necessary. I, so the governor, in, in one of the many press releases, has talked about town, town meetings and, and local governments and finances and, and like, he, they, the state, you know, Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito understand that, how this is affecting everybody, but also understand that this is town meeting time for, for so many towns in, in the state. So I heard at one of them that they are willing to, or they're looking at pushing everything out.
That's right.
Anyways, so Bob, I would answer your question by saying, I would say, we don't know yet. So I, I'm guessing they might, if, if everything on April 7th, for miraculously, we're over the, you know, we've, we've hit the peak and we're coming down, they might just say, listen, you're, we're supposed to have six weeks for whatever, we're going to allow you to do it in four, type thing, you know? But we just, we just don't know. I would suggest that you cancel your planning board meeting.
Well, it sounds like.
Or your, I mean, your, your, the other one, the, the CPA meeting.
I would say cancel the CPA and then ask the applicant if, under the circumstances, they would consent to an extension.
There have been previous situations, Bob, where the planning board has extended a hearing, a second time, I believe.
Right.
We've extended this hearing only once, on his request.
And this would be, at this point, it would be a week later, right? So it's April 7th is, as of today, April 7th is.
Yeah.
Back to normal, but if, at least a week.
Just to piggyback on, on what Brian had said, the governor has filed legislation to, to aid communities, looking at, at postponing your, your budget and town meeting.
Yeah, Lydia?
The, what, what he said, the CPC hearing.
Yeah.
CPA.
Yeah, CPC hearing. There's a time schedule.
Right.
And in order for the town to take a vote on the CPC, applicants would, they finally decide, okay, we're going to grant so much to this person, so much under CPA money, you have to have those hearings in place in order to have that at town meeting. So all of these applicants would miss their opportunity to.
Except that if town meeting is extended, then there would be time to have the hearing.
If.
Well, I, whether it.
At this point.
I would suggest, I, I would suggest that, that the administration, you know, the state administration isn't, is, is going to relax the rules or regulations. They're, they're not gonna, they're not gonna, these, these groups aren't going to suffer of not being able to get their funds because we couldn't have a public meeting, because they told us not to have a public meeting, right? So I think we have to have a little bit of faith in the process, you know, over the next few weeks to see how it plays out. I mean, none of us can predict the future, but, you know.
And say, hey.
If you're supposed to have six weeks, I'm sure they'll let you have four. I mean, right? It's all about getting through this.
Well, I guess the other thing I would say is that in light of what's happened and perhaps part of what the administration is thinking about, but we might want to even make a request right now, is that we get the kind of necessary equipment so that we can have public Skyped meetings and/or large conference call meetings. I mean, I, I've been involved in, you know, maybe, I'm sure many of you here in the room in webinars that have like hundred, you know, thousands of people on it, because they're, you're calling in from all over the country, and it's just one phone number. But it's just having that capability of having that machine on the table there, it's just an expense that we probably aren't, you know, we haven't prepared for it in our budget, but it would be a simple thing, I think, to think about for in the future. We don't want to rely on that, you don't want to have all your meetings like that, but if the circumstances like this occur again, and plus, it would be the opportunity for seniors to participate in meetings that even, and under normal times, when they wouldn't be able to come out for them.
Yeah, the technology is certainly there.
Oh, yeah.
A thousand people were on the phone call for the education effort the other day.
It's just, you know, you need to have the box, if you will.
Right, right.
The rec committee has, has a meeting, and they were, the chair of the rec committee was already on top of it, and I can't remember the name of it, but it's something online, and she seemed to know, oh, yeah, we're going to do this, whatever the name of it was. So the kids already had the knowledge of, of how to do this without, you know, and.
It's a service.
I gotta follow up.
Zoom, I mean, we do, I do Zoom meetings all the time.
Zoom, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I do them.
So I think that's what, that's how they were handling it, I know nothing about.
Not all the time.
Does, would anybody else like to make a comment regarding the, this sort of portion of the meeting?
So one of the, the big caveats of declaring the local state of emergency, specific here in Hatfield, the, the possibility of maybe reencumbering funds from the state or federal government is one piece of it. The other bigger portion for us as the two chiefs is the ability that, to deficit spend. The Board of Selectmen have a line item that is emergency operations, there's $25 in that line item to keep it open, but that is essentially where, by declaring the state of emergency, would give us the ability, I don't believe any of our budgets currently with the excess of buying products currently can really afford to, to take away from our own budgets in this difficult time. So being able to declare the state of, the local emergency would allow us to deficit spend to a point, or being, being able to reallocate funds from other departments without having to go to a town meeting to get through this, this crisis that we're going through right now. There is a line item in emergency management, and there's also on the Board of Selectmen's side, the ability in both places to have it, but I know that.
At this point, though, we're really not realizing expenses surrounding this.
Sure.
We are?
Yes, we are.
Yes, yes.
Or track, departments are tracked.
In excess supplies.
The supplies you mentioned, getting the.
We've got our first initial that we've, we've had.
Right.
Under Chief Gunn, we had the, the last outbreak a couple of years ago, Ebola, we had some of those supplies, but now buying another 50 gallons last week.
Right, okay.
The items that Chief de Koshak put in a requisition for, they don't come free to us, and things that the Board of Health are even going to need to purchase, not every budget can absorb those extra funds and still continue to function for the next three months, four months, at this point. So being able to have, declare the, the local emergency, and now the ability to deficit spend or be able to reallocate funds without having to go to a town meeting is a very crucial point in this.
Right. The single most important part of declaring a state of emergency is the, the fact that it allows this town to move money around without seeking voter approval. And that's the, the most important reason of this emergency, and the tracking of these expenses is the most critical part of that. So it is absolutely important.
Thank you. Phil?
Well, I just want to, you know, thank everybody for all their efforts in this crisis fund. To go back to the funding source, I know that, that Chief Gunn and I have been through this whole FEMA thing many times, and the most key to that is to keep everything into one person's hand.
In one account, and that's why.
In one account. So that's why that was created in the Board of Selectmen's for the $25, because what FEMA says, like, one time it was in the DPW's budget, you had to deficit spend, so you had to go through all the accounts for a million dollars to get reimbursed, and you would never do that. So what you want to do, if you, if you put everything into that $25 account, you know you're going to go into deficit, instead of trying to tap every department. And that's why it was created then, because I know now that there's other, as far as the school side and the facilities, they're looking for some direction, whether they can spend to sanitize, clean the buildings, and we surely, as town facilities, are going to be looking at that same cost. Because once this thing, once people are acquainted with exactly what's going on and people aren't in the building, is the time to have somebody come in and clean and sanitize.
And that was going to be my next point of conversation, is, is that if we're going to do, if we should be moving forward to do this tonight, so that we can look at, the schools are closed, after tomorrow, there should be nobody in the schools, and if we can arrange for an outside company to come in and clean everything from top, I, my personal job is working at the barracks, the state police already had people come in and clean our barracks, and now basically, the general public's not allowed in, our family members aren't allowed to come see us at work or anything like that, to keep the germs out and only the workers are there, that kind of stuff, and then they'll call them back, God forbid, any of us are exposed. But they came in and did like fogging and all this stuff to get the, to basically de-germ it, if you want to call it that. So this is the time, for the next three weeks, for us to get the schools done and to consider the downstairs, I mean, we're using the downstairs of the church as our COA space, it's a spot that we should be taking care of before we let our seniors back in again, that kind of stuff. So this is where we can do that deficit spending and be able to hopefully get reimbursement at some point back.
Right.
But it's a spend, it's a spending that needs to happen, to keep people safe.
And I would agree, and now's the time to, and that's why we're.
They gotta be all booked up.
That's why we're moving.
Some places.
That's why we're having the conversation tonight, because we're not the only city or town that are going to be looking to have this kind of work done, right? So, so we need to hit the ground running tomorrow, hopefully.
Yep.
With making some calls and, and you guys all coordinating your efforts. I mean, that, that's the other thing, we need to keep the coordination going, so that, you know, through somebody for hiring.
The smart thing I met with the superintendent of schools, and, you know, that's his biggest concern.
Sure.
Because I said, you know, how many other communities are looking for the exact same thing?
Right.
So to not have the authority from the Board of Selectmen to say, yes, go out and do it.
Yep.
You're going to be behind the curve, because you already sort of are now.
Well, we are a little bit behind the curve, but my other question is, and Marlene, you probably have the answer to this, is when it comes to that kind of stuff, do we have to, can we hire whoever we want? Is there a whole, you know what I'm saying? Because I know there's a company that's in town who's already stepped up saying that they were going to clean our playgrounds for us, free of cost. The woman reached out to me and asked if it was okay for their, her company to do this, because she wanted to make sure kids could still play on the playground.
I don't understand the emergency that the.
Reverend Kirman's.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I wasn't sure, so with that said, then maybe we have the ability to hopefully help some of our local business, too. I mean, I'm not trying to, this isn't to say others.
But I also suggest that it's always a best practice to, you know, get a couple of.
Get a couple of prices.
Well, that's fine, but I'm just saying is, is that, I mean, we might luck out, but I know we have a company in town that offered to clean our playgrounds, just so the kids had somewhere to maybe go, if they're riding their bikes with only themselves or one other kid and not pick up germs and so on. So if that, if that company's available to do our schools while this kid, everybody's out of it, that might be the best thing for us to be able to look into tomorrow, the next day, and not be behind the eight ball at this point.
I would, I would suggest that we look into it sooner rather than later, and make it a larger package of building behind us, this building, the school, you know, whatever, library, you know, wherever, let's, let's just get it rolling.
We do need to reach out to other companies, too.
Absolutely, and I just wanted to ensure the process, that's what I was just saying.
Yep.
So I, I think we need to maybe stay on track, too, a little bit here with the, the deficit spending or the account, so, and maybe just agree on which account to use, and then who's going to be in charge of that or account or keeping those records or so on and so forth.
going to be in charge of that or account or keeping those records or so on and so forth. So whether it be the Selectmen's account and and Marlene's in charge of all those expenses so on and so forth, so that we have a home to go to, so to speak. And then I also think it's important, I mean, just for the public to know as well, when it comes to this, whether or not, you know, there's no guarantee we get reimbursement.
Right.
So there are definite costs there. But also, if, even if we were to get reimbursement, it's a 75%. It's not a full 100%. So there, 25% is, we're on the hook for. So with that being said, there are costs with this sort of a thing and and people just need to be prepared for that sort of a thing. And hopefully, there's very little.
Right.
Hopefully, it can be done once.
Hopefully, this is a very, you know.
I think the deep cleaning is the key at this point.
I think it would be good to have you as the.
Well, usually goes to the emergency manager.
Oh, okay.
It could still be your, it could still be.
You can take our $25.
The Selectmen's Emergency Fund.
It really needs to be that.
You talking about that $25?
The $25.
Correct. That was the placeholder. So you know you're going to deficit spend.
It does need to be that account. I think it's $20. There's already been guidance from the Commonwealth out about a three-page document which outlines a little, some of the stuff that fits the mold.
Okay. And so is that you that oversees it or Bob?
Bob.
Okay.
And what that means is any.
Is there the emergency manager?
Yeah. Anybody that incurs expenses from any department related to this this outbreak, Bob needs to know about it.
Is there, is that after the emergency is declared? Because I actually ordered some stuff a week ago.
No, that would, that would come through now as well.
Okay. So I could, I could pass that on to you.
Because it was for that reason.
Correct.
Right? So for that reason.
We'll get an email out to all departments saying that they need to.
Correct.
Communicate with Bob on all of that. Okay, so should we?
Yeah, sure. We can do it while everyone's here.
Are you ready?
Are you ready?
I'm ready. Oh, I just, just one comment before I forget. Remember, the highest risks are seniors. So if you have a neighbor, maybe you can help them out. Maybe they need something, you can drop it off on their porch, take care of each other.
Do you want me to make a motion by reading it?
Hatfield people have always stepped up in crises. And as far as your businesses, try to help them if you can because they're going to be hit the hardest. So that's the only comment I want to make.
Okay.
I think.
You going to make a motion?
No, thank you, Ed. And that's right. The seniors need to, we need to keep an eye on. So, yeah, I don't think we need to read the.
You don't think we need to read the full dec, what do you think, Ed? Should we read the full declaration, the big long one? Or I don't mind reading it if you guys want to.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this is.
I like those wherethes and therefore's.
So this is the motion we're making, this is the declaration that we're making a motion to accept. Whereas, a sudden, generally unexpected occurrence of circumstances demanding public action has arisen within the town of Hatfield. And whereas, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Hatfield, Massachusetts, upon advice from the Board of Health, Mass. Department of Public Health, and their designees, have determined that the COVID-19 coronavirus incident poses a present, reasonable, and imminent danger to public health, safety, or general welfare of the people of the town of Hatfield or their property, so that it has become necessary for the Mass. Department of Public Health to utilize and coordinate the services, equipment, supplies, and facilities of existing departments, offices, and agencies, or the community for the purposes of emergency management and emergency functions. And whereas, the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has determined that the immediate public action is needed to prevent, minimize, or mitigate damage to public health, safety, or general welfare of the people of the town of Hatfield, or the property which may otherwise result from the above described incident, and that taking the time required to comply with the various state and local procurement laws would endanger the health or safety of the people or their property. And and procurement laws would endanger, is that repetitive? It is.
There you, oh, it is.
Yep, sorry.
Oh, it is.
Yep. Whereas, the governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has recommended that a state of emergency be declared in the community of the town of Hatfield. And whereas, the people of the community of the town of Hatfield should be able to depend upon guidance from their chief municipal officials. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the community of the town of Hatfield, Massachusetts, hereby declare that as of.
7:15.
7:15.
7:15.
That's when you start reading the motion.
7:15 PM on March 16th, 2020, a state of emergency exists in the community of the town of Hatfield. This declaration of emergency shall remain in effect until notice is given pursuant to our judgment that the state of emergency no longer exists.
Thank you for reading that, Diana. Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No. No.
Any chiefs, Carrie, Board of Health, anybody?
I just have one quick comment because we do have as many people as we're going to possibly get for this.
About the motion or?
Oh, no, not about the.
Okay, so.
Sorry.
That's okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Mike.
My comment is simply because we have as many people as we possibly can reach tonight is that the Board of Health essentially, when it comes to this sort of thing, is the, I guess, governing body, if you will, when it comes to, when it comes to this outbreak. So if the Board of Health issues an order, it has to be followed. By law, it it just, it becomes like an edict or whatever you want to call it, and it has to be followed. Okay? If it comes from the Board of Health.
Thank you.
And in no way have I enjoyed any of this.
Well, we only talked five or six times yesterday. That's all right.
And I say aye only because as the chair, it falls into one person's lap. So it has not been a fun rodeo, I can tell you that. But we've done what we've needed to do.
Yeah, it's uncharted territory for us. Sharon, did you have something? I saw your hand.
Sorry. So I don't usually interject in these things, but we have to talk about the financial part of all of this. In that, how are we going to pay people? Obviously, oh, Mr. Police Chief wants me to sit up front. I'm sorry. We need to, we have a little bit of time in that we don't do payroll again until next week. But we need to consider that we've closed all these buildings and closed all these facilities and how we're going to pay. Teachers do fall under a contract, but what does that contract say for this type of thing? But there's paras and there's, you know, that aisle side of thing, but also all the town employees. So at some point, I don't know that you'll be meeting again. There has to be some directive from you guys on how I'm supposed to move forward with that, the financial part of all of this. And I don't know, I don't, I'm not in on all these emails and that's fine.
The school superintendent, yeah, that I would defer to the school. I can have a conversation with the school superintendent. I did earlier today and he indicated to me that he had received a legal opinion from his attorney, from the school attorney.
Well, I had heard that there was going to be something coming from the state about municipalities and what that should be happening. So that it wasn't just going to be a school thing because obviously, the superintendent has some decision power, but they're all still town employees at the end of the day. So it's not just his decision about what he wants to do. And I, maybe you've already gotten the directive and I just, it hasn't worked its way down to me. But if you see something, I think it's going to be coming from, you know, obviously, treasurers and collectors talk to each other.
Right.
A little bit. So that if you hear anything, let me know. But I will need some kind of game plan because we, you know, there's a lot of people asking a lot of questions of me right now. So that's part one. And then part two is from the tax collector collector's side of the office. Obviously, bills were due last week. We're not going to have late penalties on those because you can't get here.
Tax bills.
There was excise bills due next week. So we're certainly not going to have late fees on that. And we're going to try to move forward with still water bills and what dates we're going to put. Because we still have to keep the motions going even if we change the due dates. So there will be, you know, more announcements coming out about that as they come.
But there's plenty of options to pay your bill without coming to the bill.
Exactly. There, you know, pay online. Unfortunately, we don't have a Dropbox. I think that's something, you know, we've already all talked about. And once construction's done, we'll find a good place for one and get one. We don't have that now. If you really do have to drop something, my best advice would be unfortunately, the police chief will move for me. If you had to drop something off there, but there's mail, there's online, you know, please don't.
I think that passing it in the mail is.
Is sufficient. Especially, a couple of people called today and I said, I'm not charging you late fees. Put it in the mail today. I'll get it by the end of the week and you're fine.
Well, the excise bills were due last Thursday, the 12th, right?
Exactly. So they wanted it walked in today.
So, well, today's not the 12th. Last Thursday was the 12th.
True.
Okay. So anyways, I'm off, I'm off.
I'm 100% there with you.
Well, so if you haven't gotten something in the mail by, that was mailed on, postmarked on Thursday, theoretically, people should be paying a late fee. All right. So there. But we don't, you're a kind person.
On a kind earth, we always grant a week's grace period because of the mail factor. So we're going to try to continue that. Obviously, we're going to be available by phone, sort of. They're also doing construction in our office this week. So if you call the treasurer collector's office, you won't get me right now because the office is literally in pieces. But I don't know what your thoughts are about paying people. I guess that's the big.
So I would say, so that, I think you called that step one or question one. So I I would say that we have not received a directive from the state, the powers that be. But rest assured that our town employees are going to be paid.
Yeah.
So we, we, we will figure something out. But we're not going to have unpaid employees.
Yeah, yeah.
But some people are still working, but some aren't. So that's where it becomes.
But they're not, I mean, like, the teachers are not working because they've been directed not to. I mean, it's.
Right. So we'll, you know, we'll, we'll figure all that out. But I would, we do. And Marlene and I have spoken, and I'm sure these guys have as well separately.
My personal opinion is the last thing we want people to now be worrying about is their.
Getting paid.
Their finances and being able to afford the things they need while we're all struggling through this.
I 100% agree.
Yep. Thank you for bringing it up. No, but if if any of the town employees are watching, that, that, that will not be an issue.
So the next round of big bills to go out is going to be the water and sewer, which are not going to be able to be.
On time.
Put out on time, correct?
Well, I I say this from two sides. I'm prepared in my office for it. I don't know how the water department's going with their readings and all the things that they have going on. From my office, we're ready to send them. We're ready for the, you know, they have.
Just need the information, right?
We just need the information. So as April 1st, you know, they have to be in the mail. And I've given the directive that I'm ready with or without town hall being open because I really stuffed most of the bills internally with everyone here anyway. So I can make that happen. We'll just have to defer to them on what they're going to get me the information.
So who's going to stuff all the envelopes?
Me. Who, oh, who stuffed all the envelopes the other day?
Right.
Okay, I'm going to, Marlene and I and lots of other people helped stuff envelopes. We're just going to sit sixteen apart.
I would, I would say to answer Phil's question that since the governor has suggested or or has indicated that they, the state understands delays and things are happening, I would imagine that anything basically between last week and probably the next, at least month, or at least till April 7th, there's going to be some sort of dispensation, for lack of a better word, if things are a little late getting out or or what have you. I, I don't know that specifically for water bills, but I would imagine it's an all encompassing. If they're looking at saying, you can have these types of meetings now, you can do this with open meeting laws, we already take it into account that the delay with the finance, with the budgets and things for, for towns that have town meeting. I mean, so I would just imagine that that's another piece of it.
I guess I'm not even sure how the situation with COVID affects the reading of the meters and getting the bills ready, right? It doesn't, it doesn't have that direct impact on that, does it, Phil?
Well, I mean, once all the information is submitted, someone has to manow out the 1300 bills.
Right.
I'm prepared to do that. And honestly, the registry sent me a new file today of bills. So that comes from the state and they sent me a file to send out more excise bills today, which is another thousand bills. So I'm in the process of still sending, you know, the process doesn't stop just because, you know, as Carrie mentioned earlier, business still goes on, you know.
I, I think that regardless of what the guidelines are are given to cities and towns and the state, we, we should still try to stay on task the way we always have and not.
We are best.
And, but giving unforeseen circumstances, that, that's when you, you know, we sort of rely on those new guidelines.
But I, I think that these unforeseen circumstances have direct and immediate and profound impact on some departments, like Jerry.
Right.
But the, I don't understand where they would have an impact on the reading of the water meters and getting the bills out.
I'm ready, so.
Okay.
If it helps, I have a unique building to uniquely segregate people. So if it comes, you know, for making payments, if if you guys wanted to allot a couple of days a week, well, I can have somebody in that, in the office and they can slip the payments under the window and we can get them to the appropriate whatever, if that helps the situation.
I think that, I would think that most townspeople would be, under the circumstances, willing to pop things in the mail or pay online. I mean, it's better for them. They, they also don't get out and have to be, you know.
And if they're not sure, you just go to the townofhatfield.org, right on the front page, pay bills online, links it to you. It's very easy. It only costs 25 cents, cheaper than a stamp, to pay your bill online and they're all up there, you know.
And you can use a credit card, a debit card.
Exactly. So.
Lots of options. Okay.
That's all I got for you. Thank you.
So we do, and I don't want to rush this at all. We, we do have more on our agenda. But does anybody related to the declaration or or what's happening in town have anything else to say from, from a department head perspective?
Just because we have it on television, the superintendent did reach out to me today asking about the school musical. Last week, we talked about it. We were only going to postpone the practice and rehearsals for this past weekend. Clearly, that has changed. And I did advise him today that as of now, school musical cannot happen when they have it planned because they're not going to be able to have rehearsals on the weekends like they have been. So I'm hoping that they can fit, as time goes on and we understand more of what's going on and things clear up hopefully sooner than later, that they might be able to postpone it a little bit and be able to still have it or video it for the town. I don't know how it's going to work out. I, I feel really bad because those kids have worked really hard practicing and rehearsing for this. And I know they all enjoy doing the school musical, but sports have been stopped too. So everybody, I mean, school wise, all these kids are getting affected across the board. But just so that the public knows that as of now, the musical is being put on hold. That was the only other thing I ever got to.
Like you say, softball and baseball season have been delayed temporarily. I don't know what's going to happen.
Rack is delayed, all that kind of stuff, yeah.
It's, it's going to be interesting to see how this all unfolds.
IIAA put out the notice today that no spring sports will start until April 27th.
April 27th?
Yeah.
Is that practices or, or games?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's when the season's supposed to be half over.
Getting stuffers, Ben's canceled.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what, are you going to have to have a game every day?
Lydia, you had something?
My, my's apparently been getting calls and this is probably in the bottom of the total poll. But the dog licensing is due by March 31st. That's actually a bylaw in town. I, as the town clerk, am not going to penalize you if you haven't licensed your dog by March 31st. I, you know, like.
Well, you can't. You can't come in to do it. Right?
What?
You can't come in here and do it.
But it's still a bylaw.
It still is a bylaw. I'm just saying that in my mind, everything's going to be at this point extended out a month. So if the bylaw says the 31st, I'm not really going to be looking until the end of April. I'm just asking for your blessing.
Do you need an official vote or just consensus?
I don't, I don't think.
We're not changing the bylaw. We're just extending the current bylaw one month or something?
I actually think you do need to do an official vote and put a date on it.
I just extend everything out of, out of month. So if it's due on the 31st now, it'll be due April, April 30th. And then, and then the, and then the fees don't start until the.
For this year.
I will make a motion that we extend the deadline for getting your dog license to May 15th. So that gives you plenty of time.
I'll second that. For this year, by the way.
This year only.
So the motion's made and seconded to extend the dog license signing from March 31st to May 15th.
And the penalties for not relicensing would not start until June 15th.
Okay.
Okay. Can we make that part of the motion?
Yep.
And can I just, anybody that needs the town clerk's office, please call my office, 247-0492. I'm going to do whatever I can to accommodate people that need death certificates, birth certificates, marriage intentions. We'll figure this out. I have election officials or people that are running for office that I've, you know, tried to make personal arrangements to meet with people to get their, you know, get their papers to them or get their papers from them. And just, please feel free to call me and we'll just figure it out, you know.
Thank you. So let me take care of this motion. So a motion's made and seconded, that's all right, for the bylaw. All those in favor?
Not for the bylaw.
Well, for the extension of the bylaw, yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thanks. Lydia, to that point, I said this earlier, I don't know if you were sitting here then, but the town hall starting tomorrow is closed to the public. So unless they call you.
Yes.
To make an arrangement, to do whatever the arrangement is, nobody from the, none of the public, from the town of Hatfield or any other community for that matter, should[1752.51] should be in this building starting tomorrow.
I have a question.
Yes.
UPS.
So I spoke to the individual, the driver, today that came in. They're going to knock on the front door and let us know they have a delivery, and then we will let them drop the boxes off inside here.
Okay.
So, and I'd just like to state that there currently is a statement posted on the town's website that has information, www.townofhatfield.org. The town clerk's office and the town administrator's office numbers are listed on that statement if there's any questions. And of course, on the town's website, there are the departments. You can go to those departments directly, and they have their number.
And are contractors still coming in?
And, oh, and the other thing, that alert...
Yeah, well, they should be. I mean, we can't hold this whole thing.
The new website that has the alert, every time I'm posting a meeting, and I'm trying now, as we're getting a handle on this, if we're posting any kind of notice, if I press the button that says "Send it to E-Large," whoever has put in their email address, that notice is going to automatically go out to you. I don't have to be emailing everybody. You just check the button to have it be part of the E-Large, and whatever I post goes out. So...
That's any notice, right?
Any notice.
If they register.
Right. If they register, and you have items you can pick from, I want to hear about news alerts. I want to hear about selectmen's meetings. I want to hear about planning board meetings. So they can check what they want to keep on top of, and once those things are posted, we're getting in the habit of checking that box for the E-Large, so people actually will get those emails.
Thank you. I think the last thing I'd like to say, and then Diana and Ed, if they'd like to say something on the same topic, certainly feel free, like any topic for that matter, but I guess I'm just asking the public to be patient. This is new uncharted territory for all of us in this room, all of you at home. We're just all doing the best we can. Information's going to keep coming out. Information's going to keep changing. All we can do is the best we can do to try to keep everybody safe, and that's all of our responsibilities here. So I don't know if anybody wanted to say anything more than...
We'll get through this.
We will get through it, and I appreciate everybody here and just stay on top of it as best we can.
Okay. All right. Do anybody have anything else regarding this topic? Okay, great. John, why don't we take just a couple minutes so people can head out if they'd like, and then we'll continue with our meeting. Thank you very much. Welcome back, everybody. With us tonight, we have Bob Wagner from the Planning Board to discuss a potential or a zoning bylaw recommendation. Is that the best way of saying it?
So the Planning Board held a hearing on March 4th, an actual posted public hearing, on two amendments to our zoning bylaw. These were subjects, a subject of a conversation in at least two or three previous meetings, but that were not posted as public hearings. And we adopted, we actually approved both of them to advance to you all to place on the town meeting warrant. The first one is really a housekeeping item. When the solar bylaw was created a number of years ago, medium ground mount and large ground mount solar arrays were listed along with the other solar, you know, home solar and co-op solar projects under accessory uses in the table of use. And really, while, if you read the definition of accessory use in the town's bylaw, it means a use that is, in effect, subservient to the main use, the primary use of the property. Well, a medium ground mount and solar ground, and large ground mount solar projects can be large enough that if they're on a small enough parcel, by their very nature, they're going to be the primary use of the land. And so to be under accessory use actually creates a potential conflict or a potential legal issue, which we raised with our town council after we were discussing a solar project, which has since been withdrawn on Main Street. And it was his recommendation, after he and I spoke about this, that we consider just moving those two particular uses and putting them in in a more appropriate area of the table of use. They would fall under the industrial wholesale category of table of use. We will not change any of the requirements in terms of special permit requirements in any of the zones. So there will not be any change other than the fact that they'll move out of this accessory use category into an industrial wholesale use category. Now it'll be the only change on that.
And that goes, but that goes to town meeting, so...
That has to go to town meeting. It requires two-thirds vote.
Yep. Okay.
Diana or Ed, do you have a question?
I've read that. I've been watching the Planning Board, so I'm aware of what you're saying.
Okay. Thank you, Bob, for that.
The other one is a little bit more complicated in some respects, just because it's not a housekeeping item. In light of the conversations and hearings that we had over the last year about the first application in town to grow recreational marijuana, cultivate recreational marijuana in either greenhouse or an open setting, there was a lot of concern, obviously, raised by some of the local neighbors. And while the Planning Board wants to make clear that, you know, as I think everybody appreciates and knows, Hatfield is a farming town, and we still are a farming town, but we are, like most communities, farming communities, certainly in the Northeast, we're transitioning over time. And while farming was the predominant use throughout town for many, many years, for, you know, most of our 350 years, so it could easily be said that you live in a farming community. There are many areas of town now where farming is occurring in a residential community. And so in light of the feedback and the comments that we got on this one particular project, which has since been withdrawn, the Planning Board revisited the bylaws that we had adopted two years ago on marijuana cultivation and marijuana establishments generally. And just by way of background, because we did have people there at the hearing, but I think it'd be useful for the town to hear this. When the Planning Board was considering those bylaws two years ago, we discussed at length at our open meetings, but not at the public hearing, but at the open meetings, how to address any setbacks from various marijuana establishments from residential uses. And in particular, we talked about whether or not we should have any setbacks from cultivation establishments, primarily greenhouse and open grow facilities from residential units. But recognizing that, again, we're a farming community, and some farmers in town, while it's not legally, under state law, considered an agricultural product, that they still may want to cultivate marijuana. It's, you know, it's really a legal distinction without no distinction, if you will. I mean, it's legally not considered the same as growing tomatoes or growing corn, but if you can grow tomatoes and grow corn, you can probably grow marijuana as well, or at least learn how to do it pretty quickly. And so we didn't want to hold back any of the farmers in town from having that opportunity, and many farmers live on their farms. And so if we had a residential setback, we'd be creating sort of a double indemnity where you weren't able to do what you want to do because you happen to live there, and there's a setback from your residential unit. So we decided to not have any residential setbacks for grow. In light of the discussions that we had over this one particular application and looking at it more closely and discussing it with the town council, our proposal is to have a 500-foot setback from any residential unit for greenhouse or open grow facilities in certain zones, the rural residential zone, the outlying residential zone, town business, from any residence that's not on a parcel that's also owned by the entity that's building, that's actually doing the marijuana grow operation. So that this way, a farmer is not actually jeopardizing themselves because they have a house either on the parcel that they're using, or they own a house on the parcel next door, or that's within 500 feet. So it'd be basically a 500-foot setback from any non-aligned residential unit, and that's from the security fence to the residential unit itself, not property line to property line. For the agricultural zone, which we do have in town, we've set that setback at 300 feet, recognizing that if you live in or near an agricultural zone, you should expect agriculture to occur there, although you might not expect to have some kind of agriculture going on that has a security fence around it. So we still wanted to reflect the fact that that might be a little jarring for folks that are living near an agricultural area where you wouldn't necessarily have that kind of fencing around a tomato operation or potatoes or something like that. There will be no setback for facilities within a light industrial industrial zone, there being the fact that any facility that's in an industrial, light industrial zone is likely going to have a fence around it, because anybody that's putting in something in a light industrial industrial zone that has any kind of equipment or material or stock or expensive inventory, they're going to put a fence around it. And so, and there's already significant setbacks in our, in our bylaws protecting neighboring zones from industrial uses that are adjacent to them. So we already have significant setbacks. There's setbacks for houses, there's setbacks for barns and buildings, but the setbacks for industrial buildings are significantly bigger. So we felt like, again, anybody that's living adjacent to or near a light industrial or industrial zone, in all likelihood, should expect there to be some kind of activity in that neighboring zone that would probably involve a security fence. So that's the other amendment that we're recommending to town meeting. And again, that would require a two-thirds vote.
Okay. Thank you. Ed, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any problems with anything that you guys like to do.
No, I think it just...
Again, it goes down to town meeting to determine.
Yeah, it goes to town meetings.
Yeah.
Right. And thank you for, you know, it's nice to let it be heard. And thank you to the Planning Board. You guys are always very efficient in, you know, learning everything. And yes, the original bylaws and things were two years ago, and as things have materialized through those years, I don't mean you, the Planning Board, but in general, right, we learned from things that we might not have thought of in the initial plans.
Right.
We appreciate, I appreciate you, we appreciate you guys, the Planning Board, looking into these things and coming up with recommendations.
Yeah, I went to one of those hearings, you know, and it was contentious, and people were quite upset. So it's, I think it's great to be proactive before we have another. Do we have any applications pending for additional, any other?
Not at the moment. Not at the moment. And none that I'm necessarily aware of either. That just hasn't come up yet. Actually, if I might, if I can, I know you have an unanticipated new business. I thought since I was here and coming into Town Hall, it's not something you can do very regularly. The ag commission did, does want the board to consider a policy. No need, obviously, particularly in light of everything that's going on, this is actually fairly insignificant. But we did want to pass it along to you so that it could get into your queue to review and take a look at. In a nutshell, I think you're all familiar with the agricultural preservation restriction program that farmers can voluntarily apply to sell an easement on their farm. The state typically looks for a matching grants from the community. There can be anywhere from 5% to 20% of the value of the easement that they're purchasing, so they want that kind of in-kind contribution from the town. To get as low as 5%, there's a couple things the town needs to have in place. One, it needs to have an ag commission, which we have. It needs to have a right-to-farm bylaw, which we have. And it also is required to have a tracking policy so that the, in the future, if someone were to protect their property with APR and then say it gets sold, the person who buys it may not be fully conversant with, you know, what the ag preservation restriction allows and doesn't allow. And the tracking policy is there to make sure that the assessor and the building inspector are basically backstops so that we don't inadvertently approve the construction of a house on a property that was supposed to be protected. Now, it might be surprising to think that that could happen because of title searches, and when you get a mortgage, there's usually a title search done. But I can speak from personal experience, because with American Farmland Trust, in the last few years when I worked there, I was helping them oversee their easement division. And we actually had somebody get a building permit on a farm in California and build a 22,000-square-foot house. And the building inspector granted the permit because they had the right amount of road frontage, and the lot was the right size. They never thought to look or check to see if there was some kind of legal restriction that would prevent a house from being built there because it otherwise met all of the other zoning requirements in the area where this particular farm was located. And about six months after they started construction, one of the neighbors called us and said, hey, you know, I know you guys come out here every year to monitor these easements, but someone's building a house on that farm. And so we went through about two and a half years of legal, protracted legal claims with them. It's all been settled. They got their house. AFT got more land protected as a result, and a fairly hefty fine on the landowner. But we want, the state is looking for towns to set up these tracking policies to avoid that kind of thing happening here. And so if we establish this tracking policy, which I'm hoping that you'll review and consider and perhaps discuss with the assessor, and I've talked to Jenny a little bit about this, and also with Kyle, it would allow us not only to make sure this doesn't happen here, but also it would then make us eligible for the lowest amount of contribution if indeed another farmer in town wants to, at some point in the future, protect their property with APR, and they come to us looking for local matching funds.
Well, it seems like it would be a pretty easy thing to accomplish. I mean, right? You'd create an inventory of what's in APR right now. The APR program, to me, seems a little bit less active than it has been in years past in terms of more property going into APR.
Here in town.
Here in town, so maybe in other places. But I mean, it seems like it's been a while since we've had anything.
Well, our last, our last couple were Dr. Zgrodnik here on Bridge Street, Mr. Regish out on Straits Road, and then the Belden family shortly before Dick passed away, put property on, into the APR program on Depot Road.
Yep.
Those are all in the last, within the last five years, but there hasn't been anything since then.
Yeah. But I mean, still, it seems like it would be a pretty easy inventory to manage.
We have, I actually, with Jenny's help, did inventory all of the properties that we have in town, ag easements, but we also have a lot of other conservation restrictions in town that either people have put on their property voluntarily or the properties out in the watershed, drinking watershed area. So we expanded this to include those as well, just to make sure that they're flagged. And I'm happy to work with Jenny and the Open Space Committee so that we can, and I've discussed with her, there can be another, there's room on the property cards to have an additional checkbox where it's really very obvious that, like, you know, like a red flag. There's a restrictive easement on this property, you know, stop before you move any further.
I mean, it seems like this would be like red stamped, you know, because it's significant when your properties are...
Yeah, no, it is. And it's just, it's, as we found out in California, it's not always that every department knows what the other one is doing. And in this particular case, this individual did not have to, did not get a loan for their property. They basically were borrowing from their farming operation, and so it never went through a title search.
Oh, so I was going to say, so it never went through lawyers and anything?
Yeah, it never went through a title search.
Because I was going to say, it would ultimately be the fault of lawyers and the transfer, but if there was no transfer.
No, it was not, yeah. It was, it was there. They had bought it from somebody, but held onto it for about 10 years before they decided to scam the system, and they knew they were scamming it.
Oh, they did?
Oh, yeah.
Of course they would.
Yeah. So anyway, so if I can drop this off with you and...
Yep. We'd be happy to take a look at it and have a conversation and discussion about it, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, great.
Hey, do you have anything else?
No, that was it. And that is something that the ag commission worked on and, you know, passed, you know, we voted on it one of our previous meetings to pass along to the board.
Great.
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the information.
Thank you for all you do, Bob.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, good luck.
We appreciate your expertise because this isn't for the faint of heart.
Yeah, right.
Well, thank you. But-
Thank you.
Good luck to all of you.
Yeah, we'll see you April 8th.
Good luck to all of us.
Good luck to all of us, is right.
Thank you very much, Bob. Good night.
This has been a long meeting.
Yeah. Okay. Popping back up, we've only got a couple more topics left for this evening. The health awareness description, Marlene, is that discussion, excuse me?
Health awareness discussion, we had that.
I mean, was there something different besides?
No.
All right. Well, I saw there was a handwritten and then the declaration.
Oh, yeah, I have, I have it under that, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I have like three different agendas.
So I just have two other items that I see we haven't completed.
Yep. The resignation.
Resignation from Joe LaValle.
And the update from the town hall. Okay.
Yeah.
So, go, I'm sorry.
Joe LaValle has resigned from, you have a copy of his letter of resignation, which was submitted to the town clerk. That is an elected position.
From the Hatfield, so just because Joe wears a couple hats. So that Joe LaValle stepping down from the Cemetery Commission.
Cemetery Commission, correct.
Right. Okay.
Which is an elected position.
Yes. Yep.
And the cemetery, the remaining Cemetery Commission members were notified and there should be a letter in your packet that, just acknowledging his resignation and that they would like to fill the vacancy. So my office will, will make sure that vacancy gets posted and the Board of Selectmen and remaining members of the Cemetery Commission will vote jointly to appoint someone to fill that vacancy.
Sure. So we'd like to thank Joe for-
20 years.
-have 20 years of service is certainly commendable and we appreciate it. So, and as Marlene stated, because it's an elected position, we need to fill the remaining term of that position. So if anybody's interested, please let Jonathan Bardwell or Bob Flaherty or Marlene know of your interest and submit a letter of interest and then we'll, we'll take, have a joint meeting and make the appointment at some point.
Yes.
Whenever we meet again, okay.
And thank you, Joe, for over 20 years of service as Cemetery Commissioner.
Yeah. Could, I'll entertain a motion, if I could, for accepting that.
I'll make a motion that we accept Joe LaValle's resignation, excuse me, from the Cemetery Commission with regret. I know, I'm, I know. It's bad to go.
I second it with regret.
Swear I'm healthy.
All right. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Town Hall renovations, project update. Which, which one of you or both of you would-
Well, I mean, last meeting, we talked about CO change order four.
Yep.
So we wanted to hold off because of the kitchen.
Correct.
Correct. So there was some costs under review.
We did get a whole listing of costs, so we're now satisfied with what the costs were associated with us.
What was that deleting thing?
Deleting. Oh, so anyway, that change order 04 consists of several items. Two of them which I know that Phil, the building inspector, and, and Ed and myself had concerns about was the kitchen, the kitchen sink and the cabinet. So they're installing a code-compliant sink cabinet and a new garbage disposal because they have to have a garbage disposal. Well, there is one already downstairs in that three-bay sink. That is not code-compliant. So my concern was, or all of our concerns, were the, the fees that were tacked on trucking, you know, removal disposal. I explained to the architect, you have a dumpster sitting out here on, on the property, which, so are you bringing in a separate dumpster for it? No, they measure. So they, in, in putting their bid together, they estimate based on the plans, the work to be done, how much debris they're going to dispose of. So again, it's all measured. This is in addition to what they were already expecting.
So that deletion of cabinets was because they're being taken out and it was the disposal cost of them?
So there are disposal costs, trucking, the labor charge, which is prevailing wage. There's a cost for the equipment, the truck, the dumpster. But they're not bringing in a new, a, a second dumpster. They are adding it to the existing dumpster.
More putting, being put in.
Right. So, so that, those were small, but it's still added up.
Right.
One of the larger expenses for that work is the plumbing. And again, that's prevailing wage. So there isn't, I, I made my argument. Ed and I have talked about it. I have brought his questions and concerns to them. And those are, are costs that are associated with the project. I'm asking the board to approve this change order with the exception of the $6,500 cost for the landing grade.
Yep.
I had a conversation with the architect about that as well and they are looking into that cost. I just don't feel that, none of us feel that the town should be burdened with that cost.
So I'll make a motion that we approve everything except for the landing until we get more information from the architect.
Second.
Okay. So there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No.
I, I did have one comment. So I appreciate Ed and, and Marlene getting more information because at least the plumbing makes sense, you know. But what, the way that it wasn't itemized is, was, I mean, all three of us kind of, all four of us-
Even when it was itemized, it didn't-
Well, yeah, but, but all four of us picked up on it immediately and said, "That's gotta be the nicest sink that was ever installed anywhere."
I think the plumbing alone was $3,000.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean. But at least it, it, it makes a little more sense as to just having basically the sink, right? So at least now we know what goes into that.
Right.
So thank you guys for having the conversation and finding that out. So the motion's been made and seconded with everything other than the, the landing grade. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other unanticipated business? Anybody? Marlene?
No.
Make your motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. John, thank you. It was a long one tonight.